Go. Great, well, welcome, folks, to the Xenia Council Regular Meeting on April 11th. And we're going to, before we get started here, I'm going to ask Pastor Albert Repit from Victory Life Christian Center to come and pray for us.
Good evening, everybody. Let's bow our heads for a word of prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. We thank you, Lord, for your faithfulness. And, Lord, quite honestly, tonight, as we gather, we're mindful of 50 years ago, Lord, when that tornado swept through our community and brought all that devastation. Tonight, we want to say thank you for restoration to our city and our county. Father, we pray over these leaders in the room tonight, our council individuals, Assistant City Manager, the Finance Manager, Madam Law, just all of our leaders in this room tonight. We're grateful for them. And, God, we just pray that you continue giving them wisdom, give them courage, and give them strength for the task that they undertake each and every day. And, Lord, we just pray your great protection upon our city. And we just ask, Father, that you keep us in a path of prosperity. In Jesus' name, and amen.
Amen. Thanks, Albert. Let's face the flag, and we'll have Councilwoman Cerise lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right, we're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. First item will be a roll call.
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Councilman Crawford?
Here.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Here.
Councilman Reynolds?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mace? President Urschel?
Here.
Mayor Mace informed me a couple of weeks ago that she had a trip planned for this week and will not be able to make it, and she'd asked if she could be excused. So do I have a motion for that?
I move to excuse the mayor.
I will second that.
Great. So Councilman Reynolds made the motion and seconded by Councilwoman Cerise. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the March 28 to 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes, please.
Great. Councilwoman Cerise, do I have a second?
I'd like to second those.
Seconded by Councilwoman Crawford. Any comments or questions on that before we take the vote? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We do not have any special presentations for this evening. So our next item is audience comments. If anyone in the audience would like to address the council, feel free to come up to the podium. Please state your name and address. And if you've got three to five minutes to bring an issue to us, realize that during these times, this is not an interactive discussion, but it's an opportunity for you to present items to us. We won't be responding to that, but we may have some comments during our council comments time at the end of the evening. So if anyone would like to come at this time, feel free to come to the podium.
Counsel, I appreciate you having me here. I'm Ethan Raby. I'm the Director for Green County Emergency Management Agency. I'm not a Xenia resident.
Sure.
I'm actually a resident of West Carrollton. But I just wanted to be able to take a chance to introduce myself. I'm a newer director here within the county. I had actually been promoted to Director January before last and been with Green County now for two and a half years. Prior to that, I was with Montgomery County EMA for four years, and where I was largely their planner and their hazmat committee guy. And I had the ability to get a lot of experience while I was there, responding to several water outages, civil disturbance events, the 2019 tornadoes, as well as the Oregon District mass shooting. So now here as the Director, hoping to bring that here to the county and be able to serve you all. And so with that, I offer opportunities to be able to help out with any kind of planning, training, or exercises that might be needed. I also help out a lot with grants. And then, as well as in times of emergencies, I also operate the Emergency Operations Center for that countywide coordination level for emergencies. And so just wanted to take the time to introduce myself, and if y'all had any questions for me.
Great. Well, I'm going to break our protocol, and since you're here, yes, we'll go ahead and say, does anybody have any questions or comments? That's great. Jared, how do we principally interact with them from a municipal perspective?
When there's major events, handvention, things at the fairgrounds, the marathon, we coordinate with them for planning and incident action plans. We do trainings with them. They provide trainings to our office and police and fire. Weather events, we're communicating, so there's a lot of interaction.
Great. Very nice. Thanks so much for coming over and introducing yourself, and thanks for being supportive here with us with the municipality as well, so.
Thank you. Happy to. It was a pleasure to meet you all.
Great. Thank you. Sure. Good. Would anyone else like to come and address the council? Okay, we'll close the audience comments. Next item is Old Business. The first is Ordinance 2024-07. This is a public hearing this evening as well, and this is amending the official zoning map of the city of Xenia, Ohio to rezone the property at 130 East Church Street from P1 Public and Institutional District to B1 Convenience Business District, and rezone the property at 194 East Church Street from R1 C1 Family Residential District to B1 Convenience Business District. This was introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds at our last meeting. And Mr. Assistant City Manager, do you want to just give us a bit of an overview before we open the public hearing on this?
Sure. So these two properties, 130 and 194 East Church Street, are both seeking to be rezoned to B1 Convenience Business District. This was at staff's recommendation, and the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on March 13th and are recommending this change to you as well. The 130 East Church Street property is one we recently sold. We've had several items on that recently, and they need that as part of their business plans for that property, that they're supportive of this rezoning. As well as 194 East Church Street, that's the old Carnegie Library. The property there intends to put in a restaurant and pub, and they would also need this rezoning to go through to be able to comply with their intended use for that property. So staff is asking that you conduct the public hearing and then approve this ordinance this evening.
Great. Thanks so much. All right, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public meeting. You can come if you'd like to either speak in favor, against, or just make some observations about this rezoning. Feel free to come to the podium and state your name and address, and you can go ahead and address the council. Okay, with no one coming forward, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. I'd like to have a motion for this ordinance.
I move to introduce Ordinance 2024-07.
Great. Moved by Councilwoman Reynolds. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cerise. Any comments or questions for council before we vote? Well, I just want to say thank you to the staff for working on these items and for the private investors that have invested in both of these properties. These are areas that have sat empty for a long time, and having some, both of these entities down there are going to be a great addition to our downtown area, and we're looking forward to that. So let's go ahead and vote on that.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Abstained.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thanks so much. All right, that concludes Old Business. Next item is New Business. First item is Ordinance 2024-08. This will be an introduction this evening. This is authorizing the execution of lease agreements of city-owned land for farm use on Lower Bellbrook Road to Doug Seward and on Tyler Road to Fairlands, Inc. Jared, go ahead and give us some background on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is the next of several legislative steps you've taken for these properties, including the acquisition of the property on Tyler Road, and then council authorized via Resolution 24-19, I believe just last meeting, declaring that these properties were not needed for a municipal purpose. And so this ordinance would be allowing us to execute leases with the farmers for the farm properties. The cities or staff's not recommending we sell these, just lease them as farm fields going forward. The revenues from the leases would go back into the 665 and 666 funds, the Sewer Fund and Sanitation Fund, which is where the properties were acquired out of those funds. This has been discussed with the Property Management Committee back in March 14th of this year, and they recommended this path. So I would ask that you introduce this ordinance this evening for your consideration, and I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions before we move on that? Yes, Ethan.
So how many acres are considered tillable on the Tyler Road project, do we know?
I think it's almost the entire property. Yeah, it's roughly 12 acres, if I remember correctly, and yeah, 12.33, and the entire thing is tillable. Yep.
James, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yes, I do. Mr. Assistant City Manager, just a quick question. With the inflation cost, higher wages, more expenses to the city, did we consider on the acreage, tillable acres per lot, the dollar amount? Did we also do an increase or a modest increase from year-on-year, from last year, or the year prior? For I guess?
So the Tyler Road property is new. We've never leased that in the past. It's the same farmer who's leasing that one, and it is a higher rate than the Lower Bellbrook Road property. The tricky part with that, the Lower Bellbrook Road especially is a very small, narrow lot, and we have some access just getting to it, so it's not very desirable for farmers these days. The leases are, they're one-year leases, but they do renew automatically is how it's set up unless they're terminated by either party, and the leases haven't been entirely finalized with all the terms, but that's the plan. So if we're severely underwater, we could always cancel and renegotiate that. We're not stuck long-term, but there's no escalator built in currently.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. I guess I'd just say that, coming from a farming family, that these smaller acreages are very difficult to plant in and harvest in, getting the equipment in and out, and they're just not very desirable. And many times, it's very difficult to even find someone that's willing to come in and do this small acreage. And so, yeah, we're not, I mean, you know, if you had, you know, very rich soil and, you know, 500 acres, you could probably get close to $250, $300 bucks an acre.
Exactly.
Because of the return on the investment there, these guys. Another great benefit for us, though, is that we're not having to mow this ground.
Yep.
Right? And maintain it, which we would have to do if we didn't have somebody tilling it. So we're not getting prime dollar on that, but we're sure avoiding a lot of maintenance costs as well, too. So.
Very good. Thank you.
The draft leases are with the farmers right now for their review. Our hope is we'll have comments back from them within the next couple of days, and then we will include the draft leases in the next agenda.
Sure.
With the next packet, so you can see them.
Great. All right, do I have someone who would like to introduce this ordinance? Move to introduce. Introduce. I'll do that. Great. This will be moved by the Vice President. Okay. For introduction. Next item, New Business. This is Ordinance 2024-09. This is an introduction this evening as well. This is authorizing the grant of perpetual highway easement and a temporary construction easement to the Ohio Department of Transportation on a portion of the city-owned Little Miami Scenic Trail. Mr. Assistant City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. As council is aware, ODNR is nearing completion of their Cultural Interpretive Center out of the Great Council State Park in Old Town, a new state park there for the state of Ohio. It's expected to be completed this summer, and following completion, ODOT plans to construct a bikeway pedestrian bridge to connect that center to the bike path on the north side of 68. As part of this project, ODOT is seeking a temporary construction easement for .522 acres, which will automatically expire once the construction's completed. That's a normal request for a lot of road construction projects. In addition to this, they're also seeking a permanent perpetual easement of .054 acres, a very tiny portion of this. It's a city-owned property for the bridge construction. ODOT usually does these through perpetual easements instead of a standard like subparcelling and detransfer, so essentially they would have control of that small section perpetually going forward. Both of these easements are located within the floodplain. The land is not very valuable to us or really anybody else. Staff's comfortable with both of these. There's no concern from our perspective. Also, the access to the Interpretative Center via the bike path really helps the city with tourism and activities, and it is expected to be a positive for the community. So due to this, all these things and the city's longstanding relationship, staff's recommending that we waive the appraisal of both of these areas, as any compensation would be very minimal, and staff is recommending introduction tonight, ultimately of this ordinance, but ultimately passage, to grant both of these easements to ODOT.
Great. Questions or comments? So the plan, and this is funded 100% by the state and potentially by the federal government as well, is to build a access bridge from the bike path over to the crossing 68, over to the Interpretative Center, and both for pedestrians and bicyclists. And the last time I was at the Township Trustee meeting, the current estimate is that's going to be about $13 million. So the state's not looking for any concurrence or approval from the municipality, the township, or the county on that. So this is just us doing our small share. They're offsetting a minor amount of costs as they build the rest of the bridge. I think the Township Trustees and the, I can't speak for the county, at least I can speak for the township, if there was an alternate way to do that, they would really like to pursue it, but they're not really in the driver's seat on that, per se. So anyways, we just have a small touch point, you know, from the bike trail where we have the land there. So Councilman Dean, this is something to think about next year with those state funds, right? Okay. Do I have somebody who's going to move for introduction?
I'd like to move to introduce the Ordinance 2024-09.
Great. All right. Moved by Councilman Crawford. Thanks. Next item is Resolution 2024-020. This is amending Resolution 2023-064, which established the city's 2024 organizational plan, listing position titles and number of positions for each title for the City of Xenia personnel. Jared?
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of our most recent charter update back in 2022, the Administrative Steering Committee is required to annually recommend an organizational plan to the city. They lasted this last December and via Resolution 23-64, which became effective January 1st. So this is a modification to that. And then, just FYI, the Administrative Steering Committee is made up of the three appointed officials, as well as the clerk of courts, usually if appointed by the judge. So those are the four members. At this time, we're looking to revive, or back in January, we talked about several positions that were kind of out of whack in terms of supervisor versus subordinate pay. And so we had talked about revisiting that, and this is the revisitation of that, essentially. But there are several inconsistencies when you have a non-union supervisor and their union subordinate, and the union's pay often creeps up faster than the non-union supervisor, and so then their employees end up getting paid more than them, and then nobody ever wants to promote because who can afford the pay cut? So this is trying to rectify several of those scenarios. The Administrative Steering Committee and mostly Mr. Dukar Finance Director and Director of Administrative Services, Mrs. Potter, went through this and strategized a number of these adjustments, seeking to correct several of the inconsistencies organizational-wide. So you'll note there's several adjustments to employees' ranges, as well as there's two new positions, a communications supervisor for dispatch and a court security officer, which is part of the Justice Center security improvements. You'll have another item later in your agenda about that as well. And this does remove the city assistant city engineer position, since that's currently vacant, and the restructuring for public service ended in a promotion for Dominic to city engineer. So it removes that position. It also makes some one-time adjustments to the ranges, and it separates out the ranges for court employees. So you'll see those ending in a C now. Previously, they were all mixed in, so those are a separate table at the end there. Other things, it does allow appointed officials to hire interns on a temporary or part-time basis without coming back for specific council approval, as long as council's authorized the funding for those interns as part of the annual budget, annual appropriations ordinance. So this resolution is really in conjunction with the next resolution, 2021, on your agenda as well. So you can see there's no dollar amounts in this pay plan, but they coordinate with the dollar amounts in the pay plan as your next item, so they're kind of hand-in-hand here. The resolution has been, as proposed here, is recommended by the Administrative Steering Committee ultimately. It has been discussed with the Budget and Finance Committee at least twice, February 13th and April 4th at their meetings, and there's been suggestions and tweaks which have been incorporated into this. Note, this is moving employees to different ranges and reestablishing ranges doesn't actually equate to a pay increase for anybody. All non-union wages are, their pay increases are based on merit at the recommendation of their supervisor and with the approval of the appointed official. So this is adjustment to ranges, not guaranteeing any pay increases for people. But it's the recommendation of the Administrative Steering Committee to, as well as the Budget and Finance Committee, to pass Resolution 2420, and establishing this charter-required organizational plan, and setting forth all the current positions, titles, numbers of employees, and pay grades and pay ranges for each position. And I don't know if Ryan has anything he would like to add, as he did a lot of work on this?
Yeah, so as Assistant City Manager said, this is really in conjunction with the ordinance to follow as well, but comprehensively, as we evaluated which ranges to put these various employees in and where to set those ranges, we did do a comprehensive survey of a lot of the jurisdictions around us, of similar positions, to try to get a feel for where our employees fell in relation to those other entities. And then we also obviously evaluated internally as well and tried to come up with a plan that's going to help us to be competitive in the market, to help us to recruit and to retain employees, but also maintaining some equity internally within the organization. And so we feel like that this plan does both of those things. As he also said, the changes and concerns that were addressed in the Budget Committee meeting, we believe have been addressed in these changes to the plan. So we think that this is a good plan that will help us to, over the next several years, attract and retain quality employees in those positions.
Just one other comment I would make is that when we met for the Budget and Finance Committee, we'd not had an opportunity to go over a number of these recommended changes with the support judge and his staff, and so we put those off the table for this initial set of recommendations. Our objective would be to meet with him from that committee and his staff here in the next couple of weeks. And having said that, we most likely will be coming back with an amendment to that for the court employees. So this does not address the court employees at this time, but we want to have that discussion directly with he and his staff before we made those recommendations. So I just want to help you understand why that's not, that has been held out of this first round here, but anticipate that we most likely will be coming back with some, an amendment to this based upon those discussions for the employees of the court. And Ryan, what are the percentages of the bargaining versus non-bargaining unit employees, just from a rough perspective?
It's somewhere like a third of the employees in the city, probably a little less than that. I would say, you know, 25% to 30% are non-union, and the rest of the employees are unionized. So this is a pretty small percentage of the employees. And to your point about the court employees, a good number of the non-union employees are within the court as well. So, yeah, I think it's somewhere around maybe 70 employees total impacted, and, you know, somewhere in the range of 230 employees across the organization.
Right. Just so you know, the judge runs his court. He's an elected official. He has the authority over his court, but the majority of his employees are actually City of Xenia employees, and they operate under our personnel system, and we have the opportunity to set some of those pay rates there in line with our employees as well, too, but we'd like to have discussions with him and his staff before we do that. So. Sure, go ahead. Ryan, I was just curious, on the forecasting model, was that, was this also thought of, or did we project that this was coming down the road? And was that in the forecast model for 2024 going forward?
Yeah, so the changes are incorporated into the budget. They're also incorporated into the projection model. To the Assistant City Manager's point, this doesn't necessarily change wages specifically or directly. It is changing the range under which, you know, the appointed officials can operate. And so there are a lot of employees who, in the next year or two years, really aren't going to be impacted by this because they had plenty of space between where they're currently at and where the range was set even previously. There were a couple of positions where they were at the top, and it was creating a problem from an equity standpoint within the organization. So I think it was, you know, maybe 20%, 25% of the employees who are close to the top. Most of the employees are not at the top of the ranges, and so it really doesn't have a significant impact in year one or year two, obviously, long-term. It does have some impact, depending on, you know, how the economy plays out and all those types of things, and what kind of range or wage increases the appointed officials deem is necessary in conjunction with, you know, the council and what they appropriate in the budget.
Sure.
But it is incorporated into the budget. It's incorporated into the projections, and the immediate impact is not significant.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
So when we had the Budget Committee, we talked about this, and it was totally, it was going to be brought back to us. I didn't know it'd be brought back to us in a week. So are you comfortable? I mean, have you gone over this with them? Am I wrong? I thought this was going back to Budget Committee before it come back to council?
I was under the impression it was coming to council.
Yeah, I was, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I misunderstood. And I understand there's disparity, and we got to get that corrected there. So I'm not opposed to any of this here. I just, based on the law director's email, I'm a little confused. Are we addressing the court issue tonight or not? And are we okay moving forward with this, and we're going to come back to the judge later? I'm a little confused.
Well, the court is interesting as far as employees, because the court is a creature of statute. Everything that goes on at the municipal court is controlled by state law. And I sent you the outline. There are certain positions, the deputy clerk salaries are to be set by the clerk of court. The judge has the authority to set the salaries for the chief bailiff, the deputy bailiffs, and the magistrate. Under statute, council has the authority to set the salaries for the clerk of court, the probation officers, any court reporters, the court administrator, any of it. I believe in the past, what council has always done is just set ranges and then allowed the court to operate within those ranges. Statutorily, the statute says council sets the salaries for those positions. So I think from what I heard, what came out of Budget Committee, council wants to start moving in that direction. You do have the statutory authority to set the salaries for certain positions. Some you don't. The plan was, as Ryan had mentioned to you all earlier, is that your next meeting and the work session, we'll have further discussion about how council wants to deal with those positions that you are under statute to set the salaries for, how exactly we want to handle those going forward.
And then reengage with the judge and his staff as well. But the communication to the judge, and I'll give him a call tomorrow morning, too, is to let him know that, you know, no disparagement on the effortability of anybody there, that we have not moved on any of those because we had a little bit of discussion ourselves, but we also need to engage with him as well. So we've basically set those positions off the table for this motion here, and we will come back and readdress those as a separate package.
All right. Thank you.
Does that, Wes, does that make sense?
It does.
To you. Faith, did you have any questions about this?
Is that why this has the revision stamp on the front? That's what I assumed. Okay, great. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Someone like to move on the resolution for approval?
I move Resolution 2024-020.
I will second that.
Motion by Councilman Reynolds, and seconded by Councilwoman Cerise. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
President Urkel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item, as we've discussed, this is a companion item to that last resolution. This is Resolution 2024-021, establishing the 2024 through 2027 pay plan for the city employees. Jared, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so as you mentioned, this item is related to the previous, this is establishing the pay plan for the city. This is also at the recommendation of the Administrative Steering Committee, and the charter says you can establish this for one year at a time, or up to three years, not exceeding three years. And so the recommendation here is establishing this pay plan through April 2027. The Administrative Steering Committee met January 18th, as well as February 26th, and recommended these pay grades. The most recent revision, which is why your document's stamped, is the same, pulling the court out into a separate table for future discussion, that was the recent change on this. The goal here is to provide stability for our employees and competitive wages, especially with the current labor market. So the pay plan calls for a 4% increases through the three years. You'll recognize that's pretty similar with where our collective bargaining agreements have been, the past, the ones that have been approved by council already. In addition, this pay plan is seeking some additional leeway for appointed officials to adjust pay ranges if their subordinates exceed them, the supervisors, for whatever reason. So there's some language in there to keep supervisors' rates either 7.5% or 15% above their subordinates, depending on different overtime conditions. So that would also be an extra tool appointed officials could use to try and encourage people to promote. I don't think that's a, the expectation's not that that would be the norm by any means, and with the adjustments to the pay ranges, hopefully that's not the norm for the near future, but it's just another tool they have if those anomalies occur. This recommended pay plan is through April 27th, and only affects the pay grades, it doesn't approve of any employee's actual pay increases this year or in future years, all of those are still determined based on employee's merit at the recommendation of their supervisor, and with approval of their appointed official or the judge. It is recommended by the Administrative Steering Committee to pass Resolution 2024-21, establishing the charter required pay plan, which establishes the pay grades and wage ranges for all city compensated positions through April 2027.
Great, thank you. All right, do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
I move.
Do we have any questions? Yeah, we'll have time to comment then.
Move for Resolution 2024-021.
Ethan, does the motion, do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cerise? Yeah, go ahead. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment to this, what I believe to be a morale booster to all the employees that work for the city and supportive of the city. From my experience, your professional, as a group, your service level is beyond what I've expected. I've been treated with the utmost professionalism in coming into council, so that's been my experience with the city. I've had a few episodes where I've had to come in as a non-service person, just as a public person, and it's always been stellar. I, I believe this will improve the morale, I think the work ethic, that's something I can't speak to, is the work ethic within the internal portion of it. But I think an increase obviously will boost all of that, that morale, et cetera. I was just curious whether, and I'm reading here in the comments, it says, let's see, it talks about employee retention and quality of employees. I was just curious, have you, is there a bonus program or an incentive program among the workforce by and large, and is there, have you considered, I'm going to throw all these questions at you at once. Have you considered a four-day work week? I mean, something that allows for, you know, to say, well, this is a great place to work, this is, and then the, and then the bonus piece. So the four-day work week option, then the bonus for employees that go over and above, and you guys, you guys would be measuring that. But I was just curious, when it comes to employee retention, and it comes to drawing employees from other services that want to be employed here in Xenia, I think you have, well, anyway, I'm just going to open the question to you, is that already in place?
Yeah, so from an employee retention, recruitment standpoint, these ranges are what we publicize on a job posting, for example. So hopefully, at least the max end of that is something that would be appealing and bring quality applicants. Appointed officials do have the ability to give lump sum, like merit, or, you know, as a negotiation tool, lump sum payment as well. I think from a morale standpoint, knowing that raises are possible and expected, it helps a lot, you know, you don't want to be, if you're, if you're at the top of your range, it's not very exciting to just sit there and wonder if you'll ever get a raise again. It's nice to have some of those planned out. I don't know if I answered all of your questions in there, but.
A $5,000, up to $5,000 lump sum.
I can, I can address a little bit of that, too, about flexibility, and we're trying to become more competitive in a whole variety of ways, and the workforce is just different today than what it was even 10 years ago. So we are experimenting with different ideas that would give more flexibility. We do have a couple of employees who do work 410s, where operationally, that works for that division than we have allowed, you know, a four-day work week. We, you know, try to work with employees to say, what hours work better for you? Is it a, you know, 7:30 to 4 with a half hour lunch, or an 8 to 5 with an hour lunch, or what's, you know, what works for you and your family, where, from a service perspective, we can do that, and still provide quality service to the public. So we are looking at some of those scenarios, even, you know, in some positions where it's possible, where they could work from home and still be productive. That's obviously fairly limited in our organization, for a lot of our employees, that's just not in the cards. But we are looking at those types of things, because the environment today, what people are looking for in the labor market is a little bit different than what it, what it used to be. So we've also brought many things to council, and council's been terrific in approving a lot of things that we hope help as a retention tool, like being able to transfer in some sick time or vacation time, and extending the amount of prior service credit that we're recognizing, for example, where if somebody has time with another municipality, then we'll recognize all of that time, we use the cap at six years. So trying to say, hey, if there are experienced people that are looking at potentially working for Xenia, we want to be an attractive option for them.
Very nice.
And so we've looked at a lot of those things creatively, and council's has been terrific in trying to partner with staff, as we try to figure out what are ways that we can continue to attract good employees in this labor market.
Those discussions have happened a lot with the Administrative Steering Committee, and I think there's a balance of, you know, wanting to maintain quality hours for residents to be able to come in and see us, and have people available in person, as well as giving employees the flexibility and the benefit to work from home or adjusted hours, so, yeah.
Thank you for that, that insight as well. We're principally a service-based, public service-based organization, so being here in person is a big piece of that, yeah. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
President Urkel?
Aye.
Next item is Resolution 2024-22, awarding the bid and authorizing the execution of a contract with Becker Construction, Inc., for the 2024 Xenia Justice Center security entrance project. Jared, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back in 2022, the previous municipal court judge secured a grant through the Ohio Supreme Court, which did a safety study of the court facility, and one of the findings from that facility was the need to screen individuals before they get to the courtroom. We have scenarios where, you know, you could have a victim and somebody who's being prosecuted sitting in the lobby together, and no one's gone through any metal detector or screening until they actually walk into the courtroom. So following the findings of that, there's been much discussion about how do we fix this? We have utilized AP architecture, and they've evaluated the court floor and internal workings, and trying to add security elements upstairs. The ultimate solution we've arrived at is an addition onto the Justice Center for a security entrance. Not only does this solve the court's issues, it also provides additional security for the law department, communications, as well as the police division. The proposed addition is a 230 square foot addition on the Market Street side of the building, which will include a magnetometer for screening visitors, and everyone will be screened before they enter the stairwell or even the elevator. The city solicited bids for this expansion and received one bid from Becker Construction. AP Architecture is very familiar with Becker Construction and supports the city moving to award the contract with them, and is very comfortable with their work. Access to the building will be maintained throughout this expansion. It may have short interruptions, the project's expected to be just 90 days to add this addition on. Parking and access to Market Street may occasionally be interrupted, but we'll work with all the entities around to make sure we minimize that and communicate well during the process. But it's the recommendation of staff that council pass Resolution 2422 to award the bid to Becker Construction for the Xenia Justice Center security project at a cost of $293,400.
Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-022, please.
Moved by Councilwoman Cerise, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Crawford. Any questions or comments here before we vote? Okay. Once again, thanks to the staff, Chris, for you guys, too. And once again, it's, this is, we're hoping that this will be a safety provision that we'll never really have to use to its fullness, but like you said, the current screening goes on right before you enter the court, you actually have access to other parts of the building before you get to that point. And like you said, the general public is, and it's a very large number on selected days, are seated without any screening going on there, and there's a risk, just maybe not necessarily for those in the courtroom, but for the folks that are sitting there as well, too, so. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
No.
President Urkel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, next item is Resolution 2024-023. This is amending the electric aggregation program plan of operation and governance, and amending the natural gas aggregation program plan of operations and governance. Mr. Planning Director.
Thank you, Council President. The city does have two aggregation programs, an electric aggregation program and a natural gas aggregation program. The city is currently under contract for its gas program through November of 2025 with interstate gas supply. And we are under contract on the electric aggregation with Dynegy Energy Services through December of 2025. And we just, in the last several months, went through some of the processes for selecting those new providers at some point, various points in 2023. As we did that, we realized that the process for this is a little antiquated in the way we were going about it. Energy prices are extremely volatile, as all of us know it, anytime you go to the gas pump, you, one day it's, you know, 40 cents cheaper or more expensive than it was the day before. And so these suppliers, when we go out and we get quotes, they don't hold that quote past that day. And so historically, what we've done is we've come to council, and we've said, hey, can you authorize the city manager to execute the agreement based on the RFP that we receive? And they're not actually approving the price, because there's no time to actually get that done within the parameters or timeframe that don't hold that bid. So what we're recommending, and what we decided would be best, is that in the actual government plan, council would authorize the finance director to go out and solicit bids for this, and then you'd authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, rather than us bringing that back to council as a separate item to consider, because in either case, council isn't seeing what those prices actually are, or awarding a specific price. And so we started to evaluate and look at these aggregation programs to try to make that amendment, and what we found is that they were outdated in quite a few ways. In some ways, it was simple things like DPNL and Vectren were still referenced in the plan as the provider, and of course, they've been replaced by AES and CenterPoint. So we updated some of those types of things.
Don't worry, most of their customers think about them as DPNL anyways.
That's probably true. But our law director also realized that there were several things in there that had not been updated, and there had been changes in state law, on code, that had not been incorporated into the plans. The plans were also very different, and so we thought it best that we would try to make those more similar in the way that they were laid out, and that there wasn't such a large discrepancy in the two aggregation plans that really functioned very much in the same way. And so the law director's gone through, made quite a few changes to the plan, bringing that into compliance with the current law. We've run these changes by Palmer Energy, who is our consultant for these aggregation programs. And so we're asking tonight that council would approve these new aggregation or amended plans of governance for these two programs, and then upon approval, we would go ahead and file those with the Public Utilities Commission as well. So there's both a practical application here in request, in that we believe it would be advantageous and not bog down the legislative calendar to bring some of these renewals back to council, but also there's a legislative component where we're trying to update the plan to bring it into compliance and update some of those things that were outdated.
Great. Do I motion on the resolution for approval?
It's moved.
Moved by Councilman Dean, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cerise. Questions or comments before we vote?
I have a question.
Sure.
Reading over the contracts here for the opt-out, sorry, just had a quick question. So if someone would, if they sign up, or they don't opt out, and they're then into the system, can they opt out any time?
Yeah.
So I was reading, I didn't say at any time, just.
Yes, there's.
People have the ability to opt out if they don't like the service they're getting.
Yep, at any time in the course of the plan, they can opt out, and there is no opt-out fee. Some of the providers that go door to door, that'll sell you, you know, their plan, they'll have a, you know, $100, $200 opt-out fee if you decide to leave that plan. But ours, there's no fees, at any time if you aren't satisfied with the city's aggregation plan, you can leave the plan and go out and find your own provider.
All right. Question back.
And I have a question. The benefit in terms of a cost benefit to the city, us joining in or participating in this program, what's that budget line look like?
Yeah, so obviously, this is more so a benefit to the actual residents who are paying these utility bills. I don't have the most recent numbers, and it varies, obviously, depending on the plan. Sometimes we've locked in a rate that's far better than the market rate, and we've had estimates where, you know, over the course of a contract of three years, that it saved residents $300,000 to $400,000, you know, over that period of time in aggregate. So there are, you know, some fairly significant savings across the community, but it's difficult to say, because it's somewhat fluid. Sometimes we've locked in a rate that's not as competitive as what if they would have gone out and, you know, got their own aggregation program. And so, you know, when I'm talking to residents on the phone, I always say, hey, I'm not, I'm not telling you that this is the best deal or option for you. It's going to be better than the standard AES or CenterPoint rate, but could you go out and find another plan, potentially? But this is a way for us to provide a service to those who don't want to go through the effort of going out to the Ohio Energy Choice website and finding the best deal. They're automatically enrolled in these programs, and it's going to save them some dollars. It may not be huge dollars, but it'll save them something.
Thank you. Ryan, the one question. Ryan, the one question I have is, we've got a fairly significant number of residents that participate in the Percentage Income Payment Program, PIP Plus, you know, through Job and Family Services, and one of their requirements is that you have to utilize their PIP-selected vendor, and that may or may not be this vendor.
Sure.
So my only question would be, could we, and I know we send out the aggregation letters to folks, could we put a paragraph in there to also notify folks that if you are, if you are currently in a PIP or PIP Plus program, that you need to ensure that this is in line with the Expectation of Job and Family Services, because if you don't, you're automatically removed from that program at that point. And that's an unintentional consequence between two, between a state activity, right, and our activity or the local one.
Sure. And I don't have the opt-out letter right in front of me, but we can certainly get with the consultant and make sure that if there's not something specifically already addressing that issue, that we're clarifying that if you're in those certain types of programs, if they, if it's going to be, you know, advantageous for you to opt out to stay into that, that you want to go ahead and do that.
Right.
Well, under state law, and what we have in our amendment to the program language is we are not allowed to include anyone that's in PIP in our aggregation group.
Into the aggregation group, okay.
So there wouldn't necessarily need to be a letter to them to tell them to opt out as we are automatically not allowed to include them.
Gotcha, so they're not even getting their letter in the first place.
Yeah, okay, okay. So that filtering happens before, got it, okay.
Yes, yes.
Great, Section 8.
Got it, good, okay.
We did put language in there as well, if the state would ever change that law, that if they're in that, they have an option to be in our aggregation group as well, then at that point, we would accept them.
Okay.
If at any point the state allows that.
That, got it, great. Yeah, because I know those, the PIP rates many times are higher than our aggregation rates, right? But because.
And you would think, since the state is aggregating all those people all across the state.
Right.
It would actually be lower, but, yeah.
Yeah, many times it's not, right? Great, okay. See, have you taken a motion on this?
You already took a motion.
We did, we just went into questions. Good, good, okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Senator Dean?
Aye.
President Urshul?
Aye.
Senator Perez?
Great. Okay. And the last resolution we have is Resolution 2024-24. This is approving the final plan for the Green County 911 system pursuant to Ohio revised Code 128.08. Jared.
Thank you, Mr. President. As noted in the agenda item here, requirements of House Bill 33 and the 135th Ohio General Assembly included provisions for updating and further regulation of our 911 service and specifically the transition to Next Gen 911. Part of these changes require that all Ohio counties have a final plan adopted and on file to show how the entities within the county are working to transition to Next Gen 911. The state provisions also delineate a county 911 committee and delineate how that is set up. And partly because of that delineation and partly because of local politics, the City of Xenia as well as the City of Fairborn, both of whom provide 911 services, are not, do not have a seat on that committee. So the City of Xenia and City of Fairborn, two of the three answering points for public safety answering in the county, are not included in preparation of this plan. The committee met back in January, and one of their course, one of their actions was removing the City of Xenia's unemployed Mindy Lane, our dispatch coordinator, replaced her with a fire employee from Beaver Creek Township. So that Beaver Creek Township employee has put together this plan based on a survey he sent out, and essentially, the survey results are their final plan that is proposed to you this evening. I think there's some disappointment from the city's perspective at the lack of cooperation and coordination, especially with two of the three 911 answering points in development of this final plan. But per the state, the final plan's supposed to be adopted, and a majority of local jurisdictions in the county are supposed to endorse this plan. So staff's willing to recommend the plan to council for approval. I think our desire would be that we actually put together a more comprehensive plan coordinated with all the PIS apps in the county, a more useful plan, and eventually replace this plan, but the plan meets the bare bones requirements of the state and is acceptable to be adopted from staff's standpoint.
So let me just make a couple of observations here, and I'll open up the rest of you before we go on to this. So the membership of the 911 governing board is set by the Ohio revised code. However, the plan is not set by the code. It does have some statutory requirements of items that it has to address, but it doesn't limit the plan to only address those items. And unfortunately, even though it's called a final plan with the intent of laying a plan out towards migration of the new 911 system, the template that the state provided to all the counties actually never addressed the migration to the 911 system. It really just asked the counties to provide a baseline of the existing systems and the funding projections for those systems over the next five years. The state code is requiring us not only to be transitioned to the new 911 system by 2030, so there's some time, there's five years to do that. So the 911 committee complied with the majority of the items that were requested, even though those items don't really address how anyone would do the transition, but it gave the information that was required. And it did address the template that the state had provided as well, too. I guess I agree with Jared that there, the state also has a 911 governing board, and just perusing their website, they actually provided a template of questions, which I'll ask you to send back to the county, that actually would address whether you're prepared or what would be required to transition, but none of those questions were actually asked in the plan or addressed in the plan. So, you know, part of the hope would be that in the next round of discussions, that we would actually engage with those specific questions about the infrastructure that we have. The state is engaged with a, with a commercial vendor to work on their end of the system, and they will also provide consulting coming out to each of the, each of the call centers to help them understand how to interface with that. And that actually needs to be embedded in this plan, so. But it is what it is. It's meeting the initial request of the state. The state has identified three counties as sort of their initial counties to look at the transition and actually work through the transition. We're not one of those counties at this point. And my sense is over this next year, as they work with those counties, it'd be beneficial for our committee to at least have someone as a representative go and take a look at what the individual PIS apps had to do to do that transition. Each of these counties would have ranges of very large call centers, you know, like in Columbus, and smaller ones in more rural counties as well, too. So I guess my, my sense is that let's go ahead and get this approved to get the baseline. Does, the information that's in there is accurate. Right. In terms of, basically, it was a, it was a survey of each of the three PIS apps that were there in terms of areas of coverage and a number of questions in terms of how they operate and their funding. But that, the funding projections don't reflect any required funding to do that transition because none of the current PIS apps have a strategy for doing that at this point. So unfortunately, the name is called a final plan, and that's also regulated by the state, but it's obviously is not a final plan. It may be initial baseline set of information that the, that the committee can use to go with that. The one area that was requested in here is not covered by the plan is if any of the PIS apps have a set of agreements with other municipalities or townships, they would like to have that published in the plan. We have that for ours. We're the most extensive call center that has those type of relationships, and that agreement is in place and is available to put in the plan. As a matter of fact, the county is a participant in that agreement. So I guess, Jared, one of my items would be, as we send that back, is that they go ahead and include that, because that was part of the information that was requested, and it's available. It doesn't need to be generated by the city, the county has that. And the second request I would have is that, to get it that we may not be a voting entity on that committee, but they certainly could invite us to come and participate in the discussions. And not only us, Fairborn as well. So if you look at the personnel and the budget, you know, Xenia and Fairborn are two-thirds of all the current call center personnel and budgets, but we're not really actively engaged besides answering survey information. And as you look at the actual transition requirements there, it's going to get a lot into the specific equipment that we have and modes of operation of our call center, and they really need to have our input there on a regular basis. I get that we may not have a vote at the committee level with that, and, you know, that's, that's out of our purview, but we definitely can, could be at the table to participate in those discussions. And I think we need to go back to the committee and say, we would like to have our people at the table and participate in those discussions, and not only us, but Fairborn as well, so we have, have a, you know, a consensus across the three PIS apps, at least in terms of inputs to them, so. Yes, Ethan, go ahead.
Were we invited to discuss any of this plan? Do we have any input in it at all?
Our input was participating in the survey, but to my knowledge, I don't know if the committee even met to synthesize any of the survey results or ask questions or anything. I think they're just submitting that as the plan.
Then if we vote to accept this tonight, and they say, well, you voted to accept this deal or this plan, we don't need to talk with you at all, they can do that, correct?
I guess they could, if we're adopting it as our final plan. I don't think anything in the plan is necessarily bad, but it's not, it's a lack of a plan, really. It's just information.
I mean, what does our fire chief and police chief think about this?
I don't want to speak for them, but I think staff's been frustrated overall with the lack of coordination county-wide in putting together this plan.
Because, I mean, I'm definitely a lead now because of they've discussed it with us, and we vote to approve this, and we say, well, we want to talk with you. Like, well, you voted for the approval, so move on your way. I don't think that's a good idea at all, me personally.
Yes, I have a question. If we failed it tonight, what would happen?
I don't know where it stands with the rest of the jurisdictions. It needs a majority, so I'm not sure if, where it's sitting with the rest of the county. If it's a majority, it's still going to be the county's plan. If it's not a majority, we'll have to figure out a plan.
So we're back to discussing. We're, it's an open discussion again.
The 911 committee would, would figure out a new plan, I guess, to propose to us.
So, reading this, it just seems pretty generic, honestly. It's not very groundbreaking at all. If something happens, which your plan, well, we're going to transfer the call. Okay, that's, that's not a plan, that's not real groundbreaking. So, and I guess for anybody listening, not, I know Sheriff Anger's on this, and I'm glad he's on it, but other than this, this is like appointing a committee to run a dog pound with no canine experience, in a nutshell. And it's really sad, because without representation of Xenia and Fairborn on this, it's an absolute joke. So, yeah, I'm kind of inclined to shoot it down and just see what happens. Because if you endorse it, then it's kind of like saying, well, we're okay with everything. I don't know how you feel about that.
I don't think we would get a seat at the table at that point, because if we.
They already have our approval.
That's right, so, and, yeah.
What do you think? Yeah, the, on one hand, I go back to the, to the state, because they follow the template of the information that's needed, and Jared and I spoke about this earlier. It, they provided the information that the state wanted us to put together, put in the plan together, the state failed. This is, the information the state requested is not what's needed to actually lay out the transition to the enhanced 911 system. So, you know.
We have five years.
We have five years, and perhaps one thing is just go back to the 911 commission and say, got it, you responded to the information the state requested, however, that, that is woefully insufficient to actually identify a plan for us to do this transition. And realize, this plan wasn't just to say, how are you managing 911 in the county? That, I mean, if you go back to the bill that was passed by the House, the other part of that provision was a set of additional finances that are being, you know, surcharges being placed upon cell phone calls, you know, your bill each month and those type of things to provide additional funds to the counties to go implement their plan. And there's nothing to implement in this plan at this point. Right. And so there's a little bit of a question of, as the state starts providing those funds, how would the county know how to disperse those additional funds to provide for the transition when we actually have never laid anything out for the transition? Part of my feel from that perspective is, we'll disperse the funds and consume them, and then we'll get up to 2029, 2030 and find out we have no plan and we also have no funds at that point, right? And the state will look back at us and say, well, we provided that, so why have you not made the transition either?
Yeah, and I would add, our, I mean, our dispatching department division is very professional. We're going to do what the state requires, we're going to make sure we continue to answer 911 calls and upgrade our technology as we need to. So I'm not, I'm not concerned at all about the implementation process of Next Gen 911. We've already started that, we know what we need to do, and we will, we will finish that. This countywide plan is, although it's a requirement of the process, it's just unfortunate that we don't have a say in this part of the process.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but like, if we fail this, like, nothing happens because it doesn't go into effect until 2030, correct? It's five years. You have five years to get this done.
The transition to Next Gen 911, I think the county is expecting us to hopefully pass a, this plan, or at least pass it with comments by May 6th, is what they're looking for feedback on.
Can we fail it with comments?
I'm sure if you can.
I think that's the best way to do it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? Yeah, I, this is, it's very unsatisfying. It's not a roadmap to help us get anywhere or to entities in the county. On the other hand, the state fails a little bit in terms of laying out a structure. I mean, I read through all the state's materials that they've put out, and on one hand, their, their organization that is their 911 transition organization actually provided some good information and questions that ought to be addressed, but they didn't include that in, in the legislation at all, which is very unfortunate there. That being said, we still have a requirement to meet all that by all three of our current, you know, PIS apps in the county. And, and with, as the state's starting to provide some additional funding for that, it would behoove us to know, and Jared, I'm with you, we're going to, we're going to work towards that, right? And it's going to, there's going to be some non-recurring costs to make that happen. And it sure would be nice at least to be able to report up what those costs are and ensure that some of those funds that the state is allocating is actually being directed towards those costs. And once again, if you look at our costs versus, you know, we're 50% of the cost of the call center in the county. The other two call centers are roughly the cost of ours, because we provide the, you know, the staffing for, for all the county activities, for the, you know, park services, park rangers, and for the sheriff and some of the other services that are provided, as well as a good chunk of the other villages and townships as well, too. And so if there's, if there's going to be a cost reimbursement that's coming down, if they go, well, a third, a third, a third, and our costs are much more substantial than the other ones, but we have no way of even identifying that or providing that information, that doesn't help us out either, right? So, okay. All right, well, that's good. Well, you guys ready to call the vote?
We can introduce it.
That's, I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you.
Got you, Will.
Do I have, well, one way of not, of not endorsing this is not even.
Yeah.
Well, we can introduce it and go ahead and get us on record with the vote, so. Do I have a motion? So, do I have a motion for Resolution 2024 dash 24?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Councilman Dean, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by council. Councilwoman Seres. Any other comments or questions before we vote?
I always wanted to do this. Introduce the note.
So another thing to take back the state legislature. There, these are all kinds of things we've been working on there, Levi, coming in January. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Nay.
Councilman Crawford?
Nay.
Councilwoman Seres?
Nay.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Nay.
Councilwoman Dean?
No.
President Urschel?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. And I think Jared, as we send that back up, if you could consolidate some of the comments that we've made as well and provide feedback. So, once again, no disparagement of the information that was collected. It seemed like it was accurate and they gave us an opportunity to provide that, but that, that information does not provide any roadmap towards this actual transition. Okay. All right. Next item is our appointed official reports. So, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to remind everyone that Monday is April 15th. That's tax day and, um...
We should have had the eclipse on that day too.
Want to encourage folks who live here in the city to make sure that they file their city tax return. They can do that both online by going to the REDA website. There's links to it on our website as well, but, but also if they prefer to come in here to the, the city building at 107 East Main, REDA does have an office here in this building and can assist people in preparation of their taxes in that way as well. So, want to encourage everybody to, to go ahead and take care of that. There was a question at the last meeting about extensions and, and we do follow the federal extension, so if somebody files for a federal extension, the city extension is granted automatically in that way and that date is, is six months from the due date. That's October 15th is when that federal extension would, would be up and due. So, so wanted to remind everyone of that. I did also send out my monthly report for, for March earlier this morning. March was a, a pretty good month from, for us from a income tax collection standpoint, rebounded from a pretty bad February. But again, a lot of that's just timing issues and we'll have a lot better feel for where we land from a tax perspective here as all these income tax filings come in and we, we get those things processed. So, but encourage you to take a look at that report and let me know if you have any questions about, about the, the finances year to date, but so far I'd say we're off to a pretty good start in 2020, 24. So, be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Questions for Ryan? Okay, thank you. Madam Law Director.
I have nothing to add this evening unless counsel has any questions for me.
Questions, comments? Great, thanks, Danette. Thanks for your update as well. James had asked me the other day, what am I supposed to be doing with this? And I said, well, this is for our information. No, you're not supposed to take specific action on every, one of those items. But it's really, what I mentioned, James, I'll mention to everyone, it's, it's very helpful for us to look at the spectrum of things that, that our law department has to address and, both from legislation to contracts to assisting operations in the municipal court and, you know, a whole spectrum of things there. So it's good, it's good for us to be able to understand that, so.
Very nice.
Thank you.
So, not related to counsel, but I know you experienced firsthand the eclipse in 2017 and you saw them on Monday. So how did that compare?
They were both amazing. I don't know if you noticed, one thing very special about this eclipse Monday, as you were watching it, that little red spot down on the bottom corner, that's called a prominence. And it's absolutely unbelievably rare to be able to see one of those with the naked eye. So the eclipse we got here in Ohio was even a little more remarkable. I'm totally displaying my nerdness right now. I, I hope everyone got a chance to see it. There won't be another one in the U.S. 2033, there's one in Alaska. The next one in the lower 48 is going to be Montana and on down through there in 2044. We won't see another one in Ohio until 2099.
We'll be there.
The next, the next date for one is, is Iceland, so I'm trying to talk to Iceland.
Yeah, the amazing things is you can see, you can see solar flares. They're not normally visible because of that. And then also the, the moon's surface is irregular, so it has mountain peaks and valleys. And as those peaks and valleys are, are shown through the, the periphery there as well. And all of those things literally available to be seen by the naked eye, which is just amazing.
If you've never seen a total eclipse, as, as we were blessed enough to be able to see on Monday, it's, it's just an amazing sight.
Yeah, it's awesome.
So we're a two-time...
Yeah. To get a little eclipse badge.
I know, I know.
But I want to, can I add something to that? We, we used a shadow or a directory to a box, you know, from the, from the lens and we were able to actually see the sunspots in the sun.
Yeah.
It was actually being covered and we, we actually saw some of the flares as well that you wouldn't have seen with the glasses or with the naked eye, but it was pretty cool. My first time looking at an eclipse, but I, I was greatly appreciative of that experience.
Well, I, I think the most special thing for us on Monday was we invited a lot of our older family members over. I, I know it's the only chance they're ever going to have to see one, so to be able to share that with them, that, that's what made it really special.
Yeah, great. Any other questions? Okay, great. Mr. Assistant City Manager, I just want to let you know that Brent is on a well-deserved vacation and hopefully he's at a place where his phone is saying SOS and is getting no reception. No service, so he can take some time, but Jared's, Jared's been in charge, has been changing all of the policies and procedures of the city.
Are we being recorded?
Go ahead, Jared.
Just a couple of things. I wanted to, to give a shout out and thank Christina Schaefer for planning a very successful celebration and remembrance of our 50th anniversary of the tornado and thank the governor for being here for that as well. It was, it was a very successful event. Also give my congratulations to Chuck Reeves and Dave French, two of our employees, longtime employees, a combined 69 years of service with the City of Xenia and Public Service Department. So it's a, a lot of institutional and community knowledge and knowledge of utilities and, and whatnot that goes out with them, but congrats to them on their retirement. I also want to remind and invite the public, as part of our next plan process, which is our 10-year comprehensive plan, we have, we've gone through a whole series of surveys and input and whatnot and we, we now have a draft plan. So that's available for review on our website. There's also an opportunity to come out and, and discuss it. It's a little more interactive than just discussing a, a document, so it's not total boring. But next Tuesday at the Green County Media Room on Leadbetter Road, there's an open house event to discuss and get feedback on that draft plan. So check that out on our website and feel free to come. That's 4:30 to 6:30 PM at the Media Room, their, their new addition there.
And I think we have a plan to present the draft to counsel at your second meeting in May.
Yep. Yep. So lots of opportunities for additional feedback on that as well will be coming. And then I just would also encourage residents, if, if they have an opportunity on our website, you can sign up for Hyper Reach if you haven't done that yet. And with major storms or, or any major activity in the city, it's a good way to be able to reach residents and communicate information at, on an emergent, timely basis. So if you go to our website under the "How do I?" button, you can, "How do I sign up for Hyper Reach?" and it'll take you right there to sign up. It's free. You can get notifications via text or email or however you would, would like to receive those. That's all I have this evening.
Questions or comments for Jared? Okay. Thanks so much. Next item is our council comments and reports. So we'll start down with Councilwoman Seres.
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Great, thanks. How about Councilman Reynolds?
Yes, the Budget Committee, Budget Finance Committee met. We went over financial projections and developing the 20, the 2025 budget. Those are the two big things, obviously the employees as well, which is, we already voted on tonight. And then just two others, one, one other thing is we have an email from the chamber, the grand opening of Popeyes is May 2nd. It's exciting, but their soft opening is on the 15th and the 1st, so I'm ready for some spicy chicken. And that's all I have.
Great, great. You're up.
I am up?
Yep.
Okay, just appreciated doing the commemor, commemoration of the, of the Xenia tornado that, I thought that was a well-put-together event, highly supported. Just, just the way that all was, was done, I was extremely impressed. And again, it was, it was good for the city, for those that have been, had actually experienced the actual event and for those that have heard about it as well. On April 4th, I attended the Fair Housing commemoration on, on those that were getting the Marie Kendrick Award and those recipients of Clyde Coral, Pat Coral, which are brokers of home experts, but then we had Maria Muzik. She was a disabilities leader, leader. She, she actually was in her, she, her wheelchair is actually a flat wheelchair. She, she navigates the wheelchair with her, just with one hand. And she's laying down, she actually spoke in, in that, in that entire audience that was there. It was over 200 people attending that. Drew Huggins, who basically got the community, who got the community award and then, but then keynote speaker was Karen Townsend, very noted speaker for, for Montgomery County. But that was, that was an interesting event, it's well, well-supported. People are very interested in seeing what they can do to be of help and of service. Appreciate that. What that depends.
Great, great. Councilman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say a thing. Last night, April 10th at 6:00 PM, Planning and Standing Commission meeting, man, we had one case to allow caboose to be refurbished at 72th Street.
Oh, yeah.
Which already won, that's been approved, but this, this was for the second one. And then we had a roundtable discussion of the draft of next plan.
Great, great. That's, I, the intent there is to have that as a bed and breakfast or...
I, I don't think it's a bed and breakfast, I think Airbnb.
Or Airbnb, I should say, right, right, right. Yeah, yeah. If you haven't been over there on Hill Street, take a look at that. They've done some major work on the intersection there with the bike path there and with both the caboose's there and that's going to be a, a pretty amazing setup right, right off the bike path there, so.
Absolutely.
Good. Mr. Vice President?
All right, thanks, Mr. President. In absence of the mayor, I'm going to report on the Easter egg hunt, which was March 30th. And the morning started out with quite a bit of rain. The rain continued till about 10 minutes till 11, because the hunt starts at 11. And everyone kind of waited out of their pavilion and then the sky kind of cleared up and then they were able to do the helicopter drop. And, but I, I estimate the crowd was probably about 200, 250 children maybe, so it's down a little bit. So kids got lots and lots of eggs and numerous people to thank. I know the mayor has a better list than I would, but Councilman Reynolds was there, Councilwoman Seres was there, myself. I'd like to thank Public Service for their efforts for that. Former Councilman Brandon was there, he was helping with that. And especially all the donations, the, the eggs that were donated, the bikes that were donated by Walmart here in Xenia, extremely generous. I believe they also donated baskets as well, so hundreds of dollars worth of donations that they gave away. And so I think there's probably around 65, 70 baskets that we ended up giving out. So that's a pretty good shot, like one out of four kids is walking out there with a pretty good haul. And so it did clear up, it was a little muddy, but kids had a good time. Easter Bunny was there and then he hopped away after that got started. But also wanted to thank, there were several people that helped. Last Saturday, X-Rac had volunteer day and the mayor, of course, had to attend a funeral, so she wasn't able to be there. I was there, I was able to help. I know three members, two members from X-Rac were there and I don't know her name, you know, the lady that serves on it and her husband.
Elizabeth?
Who was it?
Elizabeth Bowman.
Yes. Elizabeth Bowman, yeah. Fantastic. They helped. We were there nine to noon, mostly concentrated downtown Xenia, so you might have saw us with those little grabbers. Those are our back savers, they're a lot of fun. You know, you kind of start, it's like almost a challenge how much trash can you get.
It's a day game, you don't want to stop.
Yeah, and Nelson King, he, he shows up, he was great. And our own Brittany Marvin, who's clerk assistant, she was there and, and then we all dispersed after noon. But we had two people actually from Beaver Creek that came and volunteered and one of, it was Charlotte Howard, who was here from the, the truth last week, or her last council meeting, her and her mother, you know, so it's kind of great to get that free Xenia money from Beaver Creek people as far as their time, they're donating to us. So I'd like to thank her and her mom for helping and they had a good time with that, got to know them, they got to know Xenia a little bit better, so. And really, other than that, I just appreciate everybody's dedication and look forward to a great year.
Great, thank you. Mayor's not here tonight, just want to say that, once again, she did a great job representing us at numerous events over the last two weeks. Was there at the installation of the new airbase wing commander at the base, was obviously present at the, at the Easter egg hunt and with the group there, spoke at all of the commemorations for the 50th and represented us well in those environments and I'm sure there's a, a couple of other things that I haven't identified as well. But anyway, just want to say thank you to Sarah for continuing to represent us well in many different lights. Just say the, the 50th anniversary celebration was, was very impactful and was, you know, to have the governor come, again, who was an assistant prosecuting attorney at the time and he was in one of the buildings that was damaged, you know, and he was literally here in the midst of that. He, he reflected on his time. Pastor Mark Brooks, retired pastor from AHOF was here and Mark was downtown and had just left the root beer stands, which was just a tremendous amount of devastation and some deaths there as well. And so he was just right in the middle of that and having a number of other folks just recounting that time. So it was, it was good to remember and obviously so many families that were impacted during that day, both physically here and had businesses that were destroyed and family members that were injured or, or passed at that time. But also just to reflect that, the resiliency of the community and, and, you know, I, I mentioned, remember folks, we, we didn't move here till 78 and you literally did not know that there had been a tornado in town by 1978. I just remember driving through as, as a senior in high school and the only really telltale items there were there were sections of towns where there are no trees because the trees were, had been destroyed and homes that didn't necessarily match the other homes in the, in the neighborhood had been rebuilt. But just the resiliency of the community to, to recover in such a short time period was just remarkable. So, the, so the city event was, was wonderful that we did downtown here and attended very well. But the county event by the, at the, at the senior center with the, the county library and the historical society was, was packed out. I mean, the, the Reach Center didn't have a parking spot open that evening. People were parking across the street and walking over, so that was very well attended. And then also Xenia Nazarene had a memorial service the following Sunday night and they, they had just extensive damage at their facility and also some, some injuries and deaths within their congregation and they did it, just a good community memorial service there as well too. So thank you for all the community folks. One of the other items that I, I did for the mayor was, went to the, the installation of the new president of Wilberforce University, Dr. Newkirk. And what, what an amazing time that was to bring him on, celebration by the, by the Wilberforce community and he has got amazing plans for Wilberforce. And James and I had a chance to go for the installation of the new president of Central State and to be able to do this for Wilberforce, so I was looking for just some great things coming out of Wilberforce here in the future as well too. The, I've always heard about the eclipse and people traveling all over the world to go do these things and you sort of dismiss that, right? go do these things, and you sort of dismiss that, right? And, and literally watching that through the, the sunglasses and seeing it come up and looking around and saying, well, it's kind of interesting, it's getting a little bit dark, you know, you can see the things, and I think the most remarkable moment for me was when it got to the total eclipse and those eclipse glasses, you couldn't see anything anymore, and you took them off, and then you saw the eclipse. And it, it was just, it was awe-inspiring. My, my granddaughter said it was mystical at that point, and I, I just, so personally for me, I just thought back to Psalm 19, and this is what David had to say there, he said, the, King David, he said, "The heavens declare the glory of God, the skies proclaim the work of His hands. Day after day they pour forth speech, night after night they reveal knowledge. They have no speech, they use no words, no sound is heard from them, yet their voice goes out into all the earth, their words to the ends of the world, and the heavens' God has pitched a tent for Himself." Yeah, so that, so I know that these things obviously reflect a number of things, but for me, it, it was a reflection on the Creator and His grace on us to have a moon that is positioned in just the right spot, within a number of miles to provide the tides and the seasons that we have, and if it was offset any more or any less, we literally would not exist. And yet, there it was, and to have such a visual representation of that was just, was, was awe-inspiring for me. So anyways, I, I don't know that I'll, I, I'll be one of these traveling around the world to see the next eclipse, but if you have an opportunity to do it, you need to take advantage of it.
Absolutely.
And what, what a blessing for us here in Green County, I know, perfect day, right? And you can see it in your backyard with your, your family and friends, and just to be able to do that, so it's just, just incredible, yeah. So thank you, thank you, once again, for the staff, I know we had a lot of preparations for the potential traffic issues and those types of things going on, I think we escaped any, any, any big problems during that time, thank goodness, but the preparations were all in place. And also, I say, the mayor was there to sound the horn at the Ohio Road Removers Marathon as well, too, and that was held on Sunday morning, and so once again, what a, what a quality racing event. So I just want to say, Chris, thanks for your guys, they were all out early with public service and your guys protecting, and it literally went through the middle of our town in a lot of different places, and talking to the race officials afterwards, there was no incidents or problems with folks, and that's an extended, I mean, they, they did it from the first guy who was, he was setting a pace time to the, we had some elderly folks that were taking four and a half, five hours, and our, our folks had to stay there for the last people.
Wow.
To go through that, so, okay, so that was, that was quite an event, but it was pulled off with no problems. So anyways, Chris, thanks, tell your folks thanks so much.
Absolutely.
For that, it was just a wonderful, a wonderful event as well, too, yeah.
Last year, the chief followed me a little bit, and then he just kind of passed me up, like, mile eight, I was dying now, so. This year, I did not run it, I worked it, because I have two races coming up, but yeah.
Yep.
That was hard.
That's right. Pushing the, along, come on, we gotta shut this thing down, let's get out of here.
You don't get a special snack.
It was the start of my running, and I was like, oh my gosh, it's like, who signed me up for this?
That's right. Great.
The first race, that was last year I did it, this year I have two more coming up, so I didn't do it this time, so I have two back-to-back races this week and next week, so I was like, I don't want to do three.
So once again, you know, that was, that was a Boston qualifier, you know?
Huge.
Just, so these things happen every week in our city, just, just really wonderful things, and I just also did the ORC group for, for all their hard work, putting that together and getting the folks together, and the folks that they had at the water stations and all those kind of events, and a number of their folks were there at the corners as well, helping direct traffic as well, too, so it's just quality event was, was put on there, so. We have on our item executive session, and I would like to request that we go into the executive session to discuss confidential business information related to the request for economic development assistance, and so, do I have a motion for us to go into executive?
I'm going to have to go into executive for financial transformation for the market district.
Got it, okay, that'll be our, our motion by, by Councilman Reynolds and Councilwoman Seres. Do I have a, a roll call on that?
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye. Motion carried, it's all right, we're going to adjourn next door to the council chambers next door, we will be coming back just very briefly then to adjourn from our regular session, you're, you're, you may stay if you'd like to, but this time, gang, let's not even take a couple minutes, it should be a very short session.